We're going to turn it over to 9.1, which is a report from Dr. Greg Little, our superintendent. So Dr. Little?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to, we're going to kind of throw a slight curveball. It's just Dr. Tally's already standing at the podium. I'm going to go ahead and have her go over her end of the year update. That way, we're not redoing the mics and everything associated with that when we're cleaning the mics for Mr. Basket and others. So if you don't mind, Dr. Tally, if you would go ahead and just give us a bit of your end of year instructional update.
Sure. Thank you, Dr. Little. Be happy to. I think the board is aware that we did send out communication last week to our families about school closures and ending dates. You know that seniors' last day will be May 15th. And there's been lots of planning taking place from lots of people relative to the celebration for those seniors. The last week of school, teachers will spend that time working on cumulative folders. They'll work with parents for any missing materials that may still be out there. We'll also be working with incompletes for students. We'll also be doing professional learning, obviously remotely that week. And this is also a time where our teachers will be able to inform their principals and assistant principals and their leadership teams what we need to do relative to when we do come back. You mentioned a crystal ball. We've all been working with the State Department and getting guidance from them as they've been working with all school districts. We don't know what that looks like just yet, but that will give us our school leaders some time to get some reflections from their teachers, to get some input from that as they begin working with their grade level teams to get ready for academics for next year. Also, we'll be looking at academic data. We'll be looking at behavioral data. I'm sure you know that there'll be a lot of, we are anticipating a lot of social emotional needs for our students when they do come back. So there's a lot going on that week. So just a lot going on, a lot of unknowns, but I would like to take a point of personal privilege and just say that I'm so proud of our school district, our principals, our assistant principals, our teachers, our instructional coaches. Everyone has worked. They've stepped up to the plate, and I just couldn't be more proud of them and that work. So if you see a teacher this week, it is National Teacher Appreciation Week. Please thank them for their work. Thank you, Dr. Little.
Thank you, Dr. Little. We'll share the screen in just a second so I can give you an update. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
All right.
Oh, David Rhames, yeah.
I don't know if they want to be remembered that way, but we'll see if it works. Thank you. So I'm excited to give you an update today on the work that's been done over the past almost three months. I was named in the middle of February and we've been working since to get everything ready for the 2021 school year. I want to start by thanking the communications department and the graphic designers for collaborating with me to create a design that we felt really, that I felt symbolized what I'm looking for in this program. And that's to be able to bridge the opportunity gap for students who, especially those who are underprivileged, those who will be first generation college students. So to me, that represents a bridge coming together and that we are helping students on their journey to transition from high school to becoming successful college students on the other side. And you'll also see the College Center abbreviated at times as TCC. So I wanted to make sure I made that known as well. Talking about Phase One, so we began in February, or I began in February to start visiting middle schools. So out of the eight middle schools through March, we were able to physically visit seven of the eight middle schools. We were not able to visit White Knoll Middle School before we were out of school for the virus. So we had a, I had a Zoom meeting with White Knoll Middle School and their administrators. Next, I received about 150 recommendations for, student recommendations from teachers and school counselors from those eight middle schools. So we started with that list, those who met the criteria, the student who's pretty much the average student that's in that 40th percentile for the state test on ELA and math. So we started there. And also the program that we're using, AVID. AVID stands for advancement via individual determination. They have a core set of principles, so we use their materials also to identify students who best fit this program. Mr. Poole and I, we visited the Early College High School in Charleston, South Carolina to get an idea of another school that's local enough that we can pick their brain, get some ideas on how they started their first cohort. They were in the third year, and we got some great information from that school, so I was excited to be able to do that in February. So Phase Two, we started recruitment and selection. Once we got the recommendations from the middle schools. This was as of last week, so you'll note that most of the recommendations, or most of the applications that came in, even though we received 150 recommendations. It has been a challenge to get applications turned in. For one, some students have internet access issues. So we have asked the counselors, and I've called myself as well, and some of the administrators to remind parents that, hey, your child has been recommended for this program. We think they're a great fit to get those applications turned in, but there are still some challenges that we face in that as well, even though we got a great number of recommendations. So the majority of the applications came in from Pillion Middle. We had a total of 23 as of last week, and I got one yesterday, so we had 24 total. We have a capacity this first year of 30 students, so there are still some spots available. And the extra application that came in yesterday was from Gilbert Middle School. So that would increase that total from seven at Gilbert Middle School to eight. And that will be a total of 24 applicants from our, from the eight middle schools. To share a little bit more about the demographics of the applicants, and this is based on last week and does not include the student who submitted their application this week. We have a majority of female students who applied for the program. You'll see our racial breakdown with four African-American students, five Latinx students, and then 14 white students. Of the 23 students that applied as of last week, 12 of those candidates will be first generation college students, meaning that they notified in their, or they indicated in their application, and parents as well, that they didn't, parents did not have education beyond high school. And if they did, maybe they didn't complete college. So these students will be first generation college students. Also, we'll be serving, at that time, there was two possible candidates. They have since been accepted. We'll be serving two students who are identified as English language learners. So we have a diverse population of students that we'll be serving in the college center next school year.
Can you speak real quick? You said a group of students were identified and then 23 accepted. How big was the identification pool? This ballpark, was it 100 kids? Was it 50 kids?
We received a total of 150 recommendations from teachers and counselors.
I'm sorry, you did tell us that.
Yes, sir. So we met with, and thanks for asking that question. We met with eighth grade teachers and counselors at each school, except for White Knoll. We didn't get to meet in person. We met virtually, and we talked about the criteria, and that included that AVID criteria. They thought these students would be the best fit based on where they were at that time, their progress in their eighth grade year, and also communicating with their parents.
Mr. Basket, kind of along that same line, the breakdown by the middle schools. I'm kind of surprised to see that there aren't any students like from Carolina Springs because they're an avid school, right?
That's correct.
Do you, I mean, that might be some analysis for later on. Have y'all kind of gone a dive into why those schools, their students that were recommended didn't seize on that opportunity? I mean, is it communication? Do you have any idea, any theories that?
Sure. It is challenging to identify, you know, what happened with that. And I think it is also a challenge that we didn't get a chance to speak to students. So we had the opportunity to go speak with adults, the staff members at the school, but we never got an opportunity to meet with families. So I think that may have also caused or opposed the challenge that we weren't able to speak in front of families, let them come out in their own communities so we can have a conversation about what it is. So I think that was the biggest challenge. Even though we have 24 applications total, I'm excited about that number. And I know for sure that had we been able to go to different schools, we would have had a waiting list for this first year. So I'm really excited about the buzz that's around it. When I talked to the students, we interviewed each student. They were able to tell us what they knew about it, and then they were able to ask us questions about, you know, how it's going to work out for the next year. And many of them seemed, they were very excited when they got their acceptance notification via email. And we all sold out physical copies of that package. Thank you for that question. So with students coming from across the district, we do have transportation needs. So we were, in the conversations that I've had with Mr. Poole, and I will have with Mr. Caldwell to get more information. We are believing that it will be similar to the centers of study that we have at the other high schools, where students would perhaps go to their home school and then be transported from their home school to Gilbert High School for the center, which is a full-day program. Students will be there as students for their full four-year high school career. And I'll be able to go in individually and let Mr. Caldwell know with Student Services where we'll need specifically transportation. Primarily, the majority will come from Pillion Middle School. Of course, students who are at Gilbert Middle School will continue their traditional way of transportation, whether that be bus or car. So in Phase Three, as we begin to implement the College Center at Gilbert High School, May through July, we'll be finalizing the 2020-2021 schedule for TCC at Gilbert High School. That will include honors courses, an English One honors course that will have to be offered in the summer for those who will need it. Some of the accepted students already have completed that course, so they will not need that this summer. We are working to provide the best opportunity to take that course. And I will communicate with Howard Bissell and Virtual Learning to make sure we can get that to happen. And then also, we were going to have an onboarding process for accepted students this summer. We will do that virtually, just so they get a chance to see each other, to talk to each other. And try to make it, we can't make it as normal as it would have been, but give them an opportunity to at least experience the group coming together before we can again physically. Each of the teachers that will be assisting in the College Center at Gilbert High School will be teachers who are already currently staffed at Gilbert High School. We will not be bringing in any additional staff. And each of those staff members has to go through AVID training in order for us to be a credential AVID site. So that will take place virtually this summer as well instead of in person. And we are getting more details within the next few weeks to get that training underway before the 2020-2021 school year starts. I wanted to share my personal leadership philosophy. I was reading an article, and this came up, and I kind of, this is my reflection of the article that I read. And it states that we are not preparing students for the world that we grew up in. That world is gone. The world they will create doesn't exist yet. And I firmly believe that, and we've seen it in the last six weeks with the world that we've never experienced, that the students have endured. Yeah, the students have endured, and the students have been able to respond to adversity and be resilient, be determined, be persistent, even though it's been very challenging. So this first group is going to be very special. They're going to have an experience that no one else can relate to as far as being involved in going to a new school that you're not even familiar with, and you didn't get to really finish your school year at the school you're leaving as an eighth grader. So we're going to have a great year. I really do believe that. I'm excited about it, and I'm looking forward to the opportunity to change lives. I know that as we help students become prepared for college, starting in ninth grade, they're going to begin with that college-mindedness. I know for a fact they follow the expectations, and they really fully immerse themselves in that experience that they'll be successful college students once they leave us. Any questions?
Mr. Basket, I have one. And thank you for the presentation. It actually kind of dovetails to your final slide there. If we were to back up and say this program were to have started this year, how would it have affected the viability this last semester? How would it have affected the viability of this program? Is it more virtual? Is it, is it more virtual in its nature and so it would be almost better designed or? And I know that's a difficult question and certainly I understand if, if I'm putting you on the spot here. It's, I'm just, it's more of a curiosity, I guess.
Sure, that's, that's not a bad question. So what, with the proposed schedule for the College Center, students would have been taking their, some honors courses and they would have taken one AP course. AP courses in many schools are taken in the spring. Otherwise, if you take an AP course in the fall, you're not taking exam until late spring. That's a lot, it's a big gap in between learning the curriculum and then being able to apply it. So the AP exams and what College Board has done this spring, I'm also the AP coordinator at Lexington High School as I transition between jobs. They have done, they have created online exams this year. So the material could have continued to be taught through AP Classroom, which is a new software they have in their system where they are, their practice test. There are guys, they've been doing AP live sessions through YouTube. So that, that kind of work could have continued. And even the work that, you know, the honors classes could have continued just like they are at the other five high schools so far. So I don't think that would have been much of a difference, except for the fact they won't be able to experience the, the curriculum together, especially in that first year of the cohort.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And then remind me, I know you've provided to us the four-year curriculum, but they won't start dual eligible classes till their junior year, right?
Yes, sir, that's correct. They will start dual enrollment classes their junior year. And then they will have an AVID elective course that will be a year-long embedded course, AVID one through four. So one for each year. And that course will further reinforce the AVID's core principles of writing, inquiry, collaboration, organization, and critical reading. So they have that support along with the higher rigor of coursework all year long in each of the four years.
The other thing which would be interesting is see how, hopefully we will have a control cohort that we can compare to. So of the remaining 120 kids that were identified that decided not to participate, to match their assessment scores through this next four years would be interesting.
Sure. And one thing I'll add is, in speaking to some of the parents in, in the application that came in this past, or this week, the mother, she received the email, but she found it in her trash or her junk mail. And she said, I was just so embarrassed. And one parent I talked to, she said that she got my voicemail because I called and said, hey, you know, your child filled out the application and we didn't get an interview, interview time set up. And she said, well, when I thought, when I heard a college was calling for my 14-year-old, I thought it was spam and I deleted it. So that once again has, it reinforces that challenge that we face with not being able to talk to people in person and them not really knowing, because you get so many spam calls, you know, many of us do. So you, you wonder, you know, am I filtering this? Is this something real? Is this, what is this? Who is this person? Many of them have never gotten a chance to meet me in person. So I think we'll get some more that come in maybe this week and we still have some spots available. We have about six spots available, so we'll, we may be able to fill those before we finalize that schedule at the end of, by the end of this month.
And I don't want to speak for the whole board, but I think maximizing that class, if we have capacity for 30 is important. Because again, we're, we're pouring resources into this. So again, we want to maximize the impact of this.
Sure.
Board, any other questions or comments? Okay, Mr. Basket, thank you so much. That was wonderful. We just really look forward to that. Let's give him a big round of applause.
Thank you.